Good evening. Welcome to the April 10, 2024 Churchill County Planning Commission Meeting. The time is now 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to stand and ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Hyde, lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item three, public comment. None heard. Agenda item four, verification and posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted on April 4 at the time stated and in at the locations in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Code.
Agenda item, agenda item five, a legal counsel has comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the request of the applicants, new business item B and item C have been requested to be withdrawn, and I'd ask that you adopt the agenda revised that way.
Thank you. Agenda item five, can I get an approval of the agenda as revised?
Chairman Mark Hyde for the record. I move we approve the record.
Agenda.
Yeah, approval of the agenda, smooth. As revised.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Goings, excuse me, Commissioner Nelson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item six, verification of notification of all landowners in accordance with NRS and the Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
All attempts to reach the landowners have been made.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on March 13, 2024, public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting held on March 13, 2024.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Goings, seconded by Commissioner Nelson. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item eight, old business, item eight, renewal of a temporary use permit for temporary quarters during home construction granted to Gary Sinclair for property located at 1015 Dean Lane. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? Please come forward. There is a, I believe, a microphone button on that round disc. When it turns green after pushing it, please state your name and address for the record.
Gary Sinclair, 1015 Dean Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson, do you have comment on this application?
This is an application for renewal of the temporary use permit. Mr. Sinclair first submitted the request in 2020, so this is a project that's been going on for a few years. His most recent renewal letter said that there's been medical issues, been in the hospital, medical bills, so I would suggest, you know, maybe ask him what kind of progress has been made and information of that sort. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does applicant have anything they would like to add?
No, I just, like I said, I was in the hospital. I got, just got last year, got diabetes, and his just age caught up with me.
Okay. Can you provide us an update as to your projects, where it's at at this stage?
Well, we're trying to get the property clean. We moved things around so we could get started putting in the foundation this year. That was my goal for this year, to start building our house.
And what did you, have you completed anything since we approved you last time?
No, sir. Like I said, I got sick and I just slowed me way down.
Okay. And how long have you been sick, or when, when did you start getting sick?
October last year, sir.
The whole year?
Well, almost the whole year, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Does the commissioners have any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. Yeah, Mr. Sinclair, just give us an idea of what you, kind of a timeline of what you plan on accomplishing this year and when you say you want to put in the foundation, can you go and give us some?
Yes, sir. This year, we were going to finalize buying the property from the owner by December, so it'll be a free and clear. I've been paying the taxes. He's been giving me the bills for the taxes, so I've been paying out the taxes since 2020 on this piece of property, so.
Yeah. Just my follow-up question is, have you been able to accomplish anything in terms of construction on the residence?
Right now, I have Mr. Woodliffe looking at redoing the house plans that we have because something was wrong with them, and I asked him to look at them, and he's redoing them for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion or questions?
Jeff Goings for the record. Mr. Sinclair, can you kind of bring me up to speed? I wasn't here in 2020 when this was originally approved. So, have, was there an existing septic system at that time?
Okay. When we first got the property, there was no power, there was no well, there was no septic on this piece of property. Then in 2020, we took and the owner put in a well, and we paid, we paid for the well. And then, right, almost the same year, we put in electricity to run the well. And then, the next following year, we were putting in the septic. Mr. Nelson was involved with that too, but we had actually had HISCUS put in, in our well for, or our septic system for us. So, moving forward, we were going to take and we were paying off the property, and I got sick and, and we started clearing places for where the house was going to actually be built.
Just to kind of bring you, bring the, you applied for the temporary use permit.
Yes, sir. We declared the property.
Shortly thereafter, the well went in?
Yes, sir.
Then, the following year, the septic went in?
Yes, sir.
And the power went in, in the interim, in the interim there? So, really, in the four years since the, the, you know, temporary use permit, we've got the well, septic, and?
Power.
And power.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? Can I have a motion to approve or deny, or? Yes.
Gary, what's your plan in the next three months?
What's that?
What is your plan in the next three months?
Sir, can I answer that?
Yes, sir, or yes, ma'am?
The land that all of you is trying to decide right now is no good to us if my husband's dead. He got sick. He was not stable. We're in and out in a emergency room. So, to ask that question in three months, that is, if he can have, if he can stand up straight, if he can walk.
No, what I asked was what his plan was in the next three months.
We're.
That's what I was saying, sir.
We want to try and get the foundation in. That's what our, our plans in the next three months.
My husband served this country for 20 years. He just happened to get sick. He should be able to be excused.
I understand that, but we're going on four years, so.
Yes.
It's our duty to ask some questions too. So, if you, that's your plan basically, is just to pay the property off this year? There's not really any baby step plans in the next three months or six months?
Well, we're.
Because you, last year, you said you were going to pay the property off too, and I understand that you're sick, but this has been going on year after year after year after year.
Yes, sir. I want to be honest with you. If my husband is healthy, he can move around, yes, he would, but I don't want to promise you because first, he got to be able to stand up, he got to be able to walk, he got to, he has to be able to have good health. Because we don't, I don't want to bullshit you and say, in three months, I'm going to do this. I want to first keep my husband alive first.
Understood. So, that, I guess what I was asking is, is there any plan to do any amount of anything in the next three to six months?
Well, like I said, Mr. Woodliffe is looking over these house plans, because I asked him too, that we, we got off the internet because it was a house that, because I'm getting older, we can do it to us.
Excuse me. He said, I'm not disrespecting you. My husband worked, served this country for 20 years. They said if he retired here, they want the military to retire here, but my husband's been sick.
So, anyway, what we're trying to do is get the plans looked at so we can move forward. You know? This, this was our final year to pay off the person owns the property. Like I said, I've been paying taxes on it and everything for the last, since 2020.
So, you're going to pay the property off? You're not going to pull a building permit before the property's paid off?
Right.
So, we're, we're a year out from pulling a building permit at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Sinclair, again, Jeff Goings for the record. And if, given the current situation with your health and other, other things that have obviously happened over the past four years, has any consideration been given to potentially doing like a manufactured home there? Something that would prevent, or, I mean, lessen the burden on you?
We just, we talked about this, once my health got bad, me and my wife talked about it, you know, and that was, was a, we haven't looked into it totally yet.
I am just thinking, you know, given, given the health situation that you're, that you guys are talking about, where, the progress that I've seen made, it seems as though that maybe that might be the next move for you folks is because, obviously, I don't think physically you're going to be.
I want to look at a, at seeing what, what's the smallest size house we can have, put on that piece of property. Maybe go that route, instead of going the 2,000 square foot house that I want, you know, coming in and talking to the city planners or the county planners here and asking, what's your minimum size house I can put on there? That way, you know, things could move a little bit faster forward.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. I, I think, I think Mr. Goings has established that you've made some progress. That was my question, what's been done, and there has been some progress in terms of septic tank and power, water.
When we first got there in 2000, there was sagebrush.
Yeah.
That's a sandlot. There is no, really no good piece of it. It's all sand. Guy moved, moved from one side of the valley over to that piece of property. They hauled it in, a lot of sand, and, and there's all kinds of stuff in that ground.
Yeah.
They just filled it, you know, with, with whatever they could fill it with.
Yeah.
I've dug down and found chains and everything else just to see what was in there, and there's old mattresses and everything else in there.
So, you know, we're about to make a motion and vote on a variance, extending your temporary use permit. And I think what Mr. Nelson's asking is, what realistically can be accomplished if we give you a year's time? What realistically can be accomplished in that year period of time?
Well, that's, that's why I was saying, we pay this piece of property off, and I could start building this house. There's, that's, because like I said, we got all the rest of the infrastructure in, so I'm, I'm at that point where I could go forward and, and put a house on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sinclair, one last just basic statement here too. We understand, all of us are sympathetic to your position. Believe me, we understand where you are, where, where you're at here. We also have an obligation though, to the, to your neighbors, the people that surround you, and, you know, they've taken and been able to complete their structures or do whatever they've got going on, and they're, and they're expecting us to try to hold people's feet to the fires.
I, I understand that.
And so, just understand where, why we're here.
And I have good neighbors. I've got brand new neighbors. In fact, I'm getting the house just to the north of me, just sold, from what I understand from the original owners, so I'll have new, more new neighbors. But where I live, we're all old and retired, most of us, you know, and we're all friends in that neighborhood from about 20 block, 10 houses up, you know, and they know exactly what we're doing. You know? So, that's why I'm saying, we're in a, in a good old neighborhood.
Ask for a motion for approval or denial from the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. I move that we renew temporary use permit for temporary quarters during home construction granted to Gary Sinclair for property located at 1015 Dean Lane, accessories parcel number 008-532-40. This would be for one year.
Second. Motion?
Motion's been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Goings. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, new business, an application for variance from the accessory dwelling unit standards filed by John and Shelley Schaefer. The property is located at 3300 Sheckler Road. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? Make the button green there. State your name and address for the record.
Shelley Schaefer, 3300 Sheckler Road. In 2019, my grandmother passed away. I bought her house, three bedroom, two bath. We only had one child at that time. I work for the Navy in North Dakota, North Carolina, Cherry Point. I start work at 4:30 in the morning, not a problem, three bedrooms, have an office. 2020, during COVID, we adopted a little boy out of foster care in California, which now we had to have three bedrooms, so we hurried, you know, then we couldn't build anything, you couldn't find any place to rent, nothing, so we found a FEMA trailer, very inexpensive, put it on the trailer, or the lot where my grandma had. It was 2017, we're not brand new, put that, and I use that now as my office because there's nowhere in the house. And then I run back and forth, you know, get the kids ready for school and stuff. But I start, I have to be on a meeting at 5:00 AM our time there, so. It's out of compliance due to the date.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Patterson, do you have comment on this application?
Savannah Dukes is going to do the presentations for the next couple of applications on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, Savannah Dukes for the record. So, Mr. and Mrs. Schaefer have installed a 2017 manufactured home on the property without permits, and in conversation with the applicant, it was understood that they would be using it as an accessory dwelling unit in the future, and so staff found that to be the most appropriate path for bringing into compliance. County Code requires that manufactured accessory dwelling units be new and unused, and Mr. and Mrs. Schaefer now seek approval for a variance from this age stipulation citing that the homes manufactured in 2017 would not be noticeably different than a new unit, and that removal of the unit would be costly and create an undue burden. The trailer, as Ms. Schaefer mentioned previously, served as a FEMA trailer in Florida, but during a March 20 meeting with the state manufactured home inspector to assess its condition, staff observed the unit to be in excellent condition with only minor improvements identified by the inspector, which will need to be met prior to issuance of final permits. The application states that the ADU will not be detrimental to the public as the surrounding neighbors are all of their family members. In order to approve the variance, the commission has four findings to make. One is that the property is characterized by extraordinary or exceptional situation. Two, the strict application of the regulation would result in exceptional practical difficulties or undue hardships upon the property owner. Three, granting this variance will not be material detrimental, materially detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Four, the proposed variance is consistent with the intent and purpose of this title. We did receive a letter from the building department with some requirements such as the installation of a full perimeter concrete foundation, which it does not currently have, and inspections of the utility connections, and I have a copy of that letter to give to the applicants. Based on the information provided in the application and found in the staff report, staff recommends approval. There are a few standard conditions of approval which are listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Does applicant have anything else they'd like to add? None heard?
No.
Does the commission have discussion or questions for the applicant?
Jeff Goings for the, I knew you just got that, but you did hear some of the requirements that were going to be required if this motion passes by the building department. Are you aware of those, comfortable with those?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? None heard? Is there any public comment on this matter? None heard? Ask for a motion to either approve or deny. Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings.
Jeff Goings for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in CC 16.08.090 have been met and therefore approve the variance application for John and Shelley Schaefer to allow a 2017 model year manufactured home at 3300 Sheckler Road, APN 008-771-33, and this approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Goings, seconded by Commissioner Nelson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day appeal period, and at which time, the planning department will contact you to finish the process. Agenda item nine, new business D, an application for a zone change filed by Boulder Opal LLC. The property is located at 4250 Reno Highway. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Please have the button turned green. State your name and business address for the record.
Chad Marshall. Marshall Septic. You want the address too? 4250 Reno Highway.
Thank you. Ms. Dukes? Do you like to update us on this application?
Savannah Dukes for the record. This application is for a zone change filed by Chad and Mary Marshall of Marshall Septic Care. The site is 4250 Reno Highway, APN 008-461-07, which consists of two and a half acres. The use table listing is waste collection service. The designation, the master plan is urbanizing, and the zone is C1. Marshall Septic Care has operated from this property since approximately 2013, according to business license records. At the time, Churchill County Code did not have a use table listing for waste collection services, so it was authorized as a construction contractor, which was allowed in C1 zone. When the code was updated in 2019, waste collection services was added to the use table as prohibited in the C1 zone. Because Marshall Septic was established lawfully before the code change, it became a nonconforming use and is allowed to continue as it has been, though it cannot be expanded. In March of 2024, Marshall Septic Care applied for and received approval for a special use permit from the planning commission for an expansion of their operation with the addition of a 4,500 square foot shop. Because the nonconforming use cannot be expanded, a condition of this SGP's approval was that the expansion cannot take place until the zoning district is changed to one that allows the business. The problem is not a result of the actions by the current use, but it's due to the historically inconsistent application of zoning districts along the Reno Highway that do not align with the land uses. This is a situation that the master plan states needs to be corrected, similar to the card rezone that the planning commission reviewed recently. The master plan will be updated this year, and we'll focus on making these changes. Staff has undertaken a review of land uses along the Reno Highway and determined that many areas are inappropriately zoned for the uses in them and for the intent of the C1 and C2 zones. C1 zoning is intended for retail and like commercial activities that are better located near the city. C2 is intended for heavy commercial activities that are better located away from the city. The review found that the problem begins where Marshall Septic is located, and that the transition between C1 and C2 should be near the Marshall Septic property, which should be zone C2. The applicants, Chad and Mary Marshall, are proposing a zone change from C1 to C2 to remedy the issue and bring the parcel into conformance with Churchill County Code. Surrounding land uses are consistent with the intent of the C2 zone, and a change to C2 would ensure that future uses remain consistent with the surrounding uses. Although the transition to C2 zoning would initially create a spot zone, this change would be deemed temporary until the completion of the broader rezoning project that's outlined in the master plan. In reviewing the requests, the planning commission has two findings to consider. The first has to do with an appropriate use of the land now and in the future in conformance with the master plan. The second addresses compatibility with the community and potential impacts to public health, safety, and welfare. Based on the information provided in the application and found in the staff report, staff recommends approval, and this will be a recommendation to the board.
Thank you. Does applicant have anything they wish to add? None heard? Ask the commission for any discussion or questions? None heard? Is there any public comment concerning this matter? None heard? Ask the commission for a decision. It will be a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.060E have been met and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the zoning map, zoning map amendment request for Chad and Mary Marshall of Marshall Septic Care to change the zoning on APN 008-461-07 from C1 to C2.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Nelson, seconded by Commissioner Hyde. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero to the recommendation. Thank you. Agenda item nine, new business E, an application for the abandonment of a road easement filed by NV Energy. The properties are north of Interstate 80. Please get the microphone symbol to turn green. State your name and business address for the record.
Okay. Jennifer Shahin. Business address is? 6226 West Sahara Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson or Ms. Dukes?
Yeah, so this is an applicant, Dean Patterson for the record. This is a request for an abandonment for multiple road easements, eight in total. As you heard, the applicant is Jennifer Sahin with Sierra Pacific Power. The property is located on three one-square-mile parcels north of the I-80 exit at Brady Hot Springs. And for reference, that is about 15 miles east of Fernley, and then the project itself is about five miles north of the exit on Sage Hen Creek Road. So NV Energy is planning a large renewable energy facility, being a solar-powered project covering multiple square-mile properties. The project will be developed in two phases. The first phase will be the north half nearest to the power transmission lines in the northwest corner of the county, which will be submitted in the coming months. The second phase will be the south half closer to I-80. This abandonment application is for the first phase. The next phase will also necessitate additional abandonments. These lands are in the checkerboard area of the county, so federal lands abut each side of the petitioner's lands. On the screen, you can see the three one-square-mile parcels that are the subject of this abandonment, and the abutting lands are federal lands. There are many roads crisscrossing the valley. You can see on the diagram. And as I said, there's additional project area, Phase 2, further south, and so there's going to be more of these crisscrossing roads to deal with. Some of these are historic RS 2477 public roads. Some are not. Some have obtained easements on adjacent federal lands, but all have existed for 60 to 130 years. The owner requests the county to abandon these multiple road easements, but only those segments that are within their actual properties. They also propose to relocate the roads around the perimeter of the three sections of land by establishing new road easements and constructing new road facilities. The main access road for the valley is Sage Hen Creek Road. It is not being proposed for abandonment. That's the pink line on the diagram. There is another east-west road being the only readily passable road connecting Sage Hen Creek Road over the rugged hills to North Valley. So just off the northwest corner of the picture is North Valley, which has a large segments of the power transmission lines. And so one of the roads connects Sage Hen Creek Road over the hills there to North Valley. That is proposed for abandonment and relocation. The roads proposed for abandonment are identified in eight recorded document filings of Churchill County resolutions that identify potential RS 2477 roads. These are a result of the project the county spent a few years undertaking to identify our RS 2477 roads. The application material uses those relevant resolutions to identify the roads. The staff report identifies these as roads 1 through 8, along with the reference documents. And so this is, you'll find these references in the motion too, because each road to be abandoned needs to be identified. You see the map of the overall project, and it has the road numbering on it. NRS allows jurisdictions to place conditions of approval on an abandonment, and that is the approach being used here. So you'll see in the conditions of approval, there are conditions that address most of the individual roads, as well as conditions that apply to the roads in common. One moment. Otherwise, it's going to keep going off. Sorry about that. All right. In the approval of denial or abandonment, the board may approve the abandonment using the criteria that's in NRS that states the public will not be materially injured. And so that's the language used in the staff report, is determining whether the public will be materially injured. In the assessment of the consequences of the abandonment, the staff report goes into some detail. County departments and officials have discussed the project at length and included including multiple site visits. The road supervisor, public works director, the county surveyor, and fire marshal do not have objections to the general idea of the abandonment so long as Sage Hen Creek Road remained in place and so long as the replacement roads did not cause problems or overly burden other users of the roads. In early discussions, the applicant removed Sage Hen Creek Road from the proposal. However, in reviewing the project, it appears the replacement roads around the perimeter were laid out without real consideration for the topography where they would go. And it's unlikely that the roads as they are proposed can work within the proposed easements in some locations. And so the conditions of approval attempt to deal with these issues. Since the staff report was written, the applicant has come back with options that appear to work better, and I'm sure the applicant will be going through those in some detail. In determining if the public was materially injured by the abandonment, staff considered whether the change makes the road unreasonably burdensome on the public. In short, not just any replacement road is acceptable. And the factors that were considered include four items that you'll find in the staff report. Will the rerouted path provide reasonable passage for vehicles that would use the road? So that include emergency vehicles and the mining and cattle trucks that use the valley. Does the rerouted path greatly increase the distance compared to the original path? Does the rerouted path greatly increase the steepness compared to the original path? In some investigation and discussions among county staff, we recommend that a maximum of 10% grade be used in any of the rerouted roads. And then lastly, does the rerouted path necessarily place the road in a hazardous location that is readily subject to destruction or damage resulting in an access outage or intensive maintenance? So while the road supervisor and county staff are supportive of the concept, we do have recommendations for all roads to address on multiple issues. First, the roads need to be 60-foot in width. Second, they need to be 20-foot wide, all-weather gravel roads with adequate turning raises at the corners for the vehicles that use the road. As I mentioned before, should not exceed 10% grade. Another is making sure that it's passable by emergency vehicles and the haul trucks and cattle trucks for gravel and cattle. And then one of the more important recommendations that staff has is that the roads be engineered to deal with a lot of the steep slope problems at the edges of the project. The details of the individual rows can be found in the staff report, but I'll try to summarize the problem areas on the map that's showing on the screen. See if this, get this to work. So on the eastmost parcel, there's a number of ravines which you can see coming into the parcel. And these ravines have steep slopes, and county staff was concerned that the roads would not be able to pass up and down these slopes with a reasonable grade so that users of the road were not overburdened. There's several conditions of approval relating to that. In the corner at this point, which is the east parcels, southeast corner, the proposed rerouted path would be in the bottom of a wash after having to go up and down very steep slopes. So staff is recommending that it be routed along the edge of the ravine. Thank you. In the middle parcel on the south edge, this segment I'm pointing to goes across the floodplain at one of the more erosive points along the creek. Staff is recommending that that not be installed, but rather the road, I think it's Road 3, if you can read that, would just terminate at the property. Road 4, within that same parcel, staff is recommending denial. You'll find that in the motion for approval and denial at the end of the staff report. Specifically, this is another situation where staff didn't want the road pushed out across these multiple braided paths that drain this valley and are subject to flash flooding. And then there is another problem area on the west parcel in the northwest corner. The road is running in a steep ravine, and there was concern that it would be able to be rerouted while still maintaining an adequate grade. Most of the other areas are not a problem. And I can continue on with the report, which is actually pretty much done. So the staff recommendation is approval of all subsegments except a piece of Road 4, which I was pointing out before, but only if the recommended conditions of approval are included. As I mentioned before, the motion is a bit lengthy because there's eight roads, so they need to be abandoned. The statements of what's being abandoned need to be made individually. And then you'll also note that the motion has the recommendation for denial for that one small segment that I had been pointing to. The recommended conditions of approval are fairly lengthy because there's so many roads involved. The bulk of it, well, the first four recommended conditions of approval have to do with the items I was describing before that's common to all the roads. And then condition six deals with the variety of different conditions that I would review just now. And so there's like nine individual bits on what is recommended to be done. Condition seven is asking the applicant to maintain these rerouted paths that they're creating. Condition eight makes it clear that when these rerouted paths get corrected to deal with engineering problems, they're going to be in different locations. And so new road easements descriptions compared to the proposed ones will have to be prepared. And then those will be established through a deed. Condition number nine has to do with timing. Roads may not be abandoned until the replacement public road and utility easement is recorded and a new replacement road is constructed. So it's not until then that the road would actually be abandoned. After it's abandoned, then the applicant can move to implement their project across that road. And then number 10 talks about the actual orders of abandonment and also provides that individual roads can be done separately. They don't have to be all done altogether. That was a request that the applicant made. And so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And then, of course, Sierra Pacific Power has some alternatives that they've been proposing, and I'm sure they would like to describe what their thoughts are.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they would like to add or provide different information?
Okay, thank you. My name is Jennifer Shahin. I'm a senior project manager at NV Energy. I provided a packet to the commission. Just wanted to go through kind of why we're asking for this, what purpose it will serve, and let you know how we've listened to staff's comments and integrated that into a new proposed reroute. So we're proposing road abandonment for the support of the Sierra Solar project. Sierra Solar is approximately 20 miles northeast of Fernley, off of the I-80. The project is anticipated to be a 400-megawatt photovoltaic generating facility. It will also have a 400-megawatt battery. We anticipate construction to start in January of 2025 and conclude around April of 2027. The road is being abandoned, sorry, the road request is being filed separately from the special use permit due to schedule and cost. Abandonment could be brought along with the special use, but due to the size of the project and the amount of money and time going into engineering drawings, we felt more secure in obtaining abandonment first, then concluding our drawings and bringing that package to the board for approval of the special use permit. So we're seeking some certainty in terms of our reroute route for the time being so that when we bring our special use permit later, we don't have any road issues come up at that time and have to go rework drawings. NV Energy anticipates the project will power the Northern Nevada Grid, help drive economic development to Churchill County with several hundred construction jobs over the two-and-a-half-year construction period, as well as generate tax revenue for Churchill County. The property as it exists today is crisscrossed by several of these RS 2477 roads that allow the public to access private as well as public parcels. To ensure the security of the project, maintain the public's access and safety, and reduce development costs, NV Energy is seeking approval to abandon and reroute these RS 2477 roads. If you see in this image over here, the reason why we need a reroute is that the way that the panels are laid, we cannot put them all the way up to a diagonal road or a regular road. So due to this, we have wasted space. And this is why we are coming to you today to ask if we can minimize these roads and utilize our property to its fullest extent. You'll also see here I have a diagram of updates to the proposed design, which is what we included in our application up above. We've reworked some of the areas that staff had concerns of with grading, with washes. We've also listened to their concern about this little corner road over here, and we're not requesting abandonment of that section. We're also keeping the main road, Sage Hen Creek, in place. And due to having to rework design a little bit, we will also not be requesting abandonment of this road, number two, that staff has noted. NV Energy came to Fallon with our EPC contractors, with some engineers. We talked about it with staff about what would be acceptable in terms of design. We understand the staff has conditions of 60-foot easements, 20-foot roads, increasing turning radius to allow access of fire trucks and rancher vehicles. NV Energy is okay with these conditions and will design to the staff's suggestions. We just need some certainty on the overall reroute and that this is an acceptable reroute for staff. So today, we are requesting your approval on our updated plan, and we hope that we can together reach an acceptable reroute to the county, to the public, and to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we go to page six of your presentation? And just, we want to clarify that you, the edits that you're making on the easement abandonments is number four on partial ending in 1-5, which the one we originally said no to.
Right.
Then number two on partial 1-5 ending, you're not going to seek that?
Yeah, but I don't think you need to, well, I'll leave that to staff. I don't think you need to act on that today because I don't think a road is officially abandoned until we bring a replacement easement. Is that correct? Is that correct?
There needs to be a recommendation from the board, I'm sorry, from the Planning Commission to the board. If you wish to withdraw the request for parcel, I'm sorry, for Road Number Two, I think that is probably fine, just need to work it into the.
Correct. Whatever we are going to recommend today to the Board of County Commissioners will be an action that will have to be taken today. And so, if the Number Two item is being withdrawn, then no action will be taken on today. Obviously, you could come back some other day, but the board, the action from today's board will go to the Board of County Commissioners at the next county commission meeting, or not.
Just state your name and your business address for the record prior to speaking.
Certainly. Mark Wharton. I'm with NV Energy, 6226 West Sahara, Las Vegas, Nevada. So yeah, just wanted to make sure that your question was, was answered. We are no longer seeking abandonment of Road Number Two or Road Number Four?
No, Road Number, sorry, Road Number Four in that corner.
In parcel fifteen.
Yes.
Right.
Which is in line with staff's recommendation.
Right, right. I'm sorry. Just that part down here in Road Number Four.
And we're trying to get the motion correct, so when we make the recommendation, we don't recommend the wrong thing, and then it causes greater confusion.
Absolutely.
Now that you've edited what our staff report states, your edit, you know, your comments have changed our staff report.
Right.
So we want to make sure we get it correct.
Absolutely.
So that's the only new addition. We were already, we were already denying Number Four in that parcel, but Number Two is the only other road you're not touching.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there, do you have anything else?
No.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioner Goings?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. So, I'm looking at your packet here. On Road Three, I see you're showing that as an abandonment, but not tying it back in anywhere. So, like on our staff report up there, I think we were showing that road. I, I didn't like the way it was going. It looked like it was going across the wash, which kind of didn't make sense. But I'm curious why we couldn't tie that road back into Road One, or that the, you know, where you're going to abandon Road One there?
Yeah, it's because staff, in staff's report, they suggested there's no need for a reroute of that because it terminates in the parcel. As you can see in, in the parcel, it, it ends here.
I did. Yeah, I noticed that.
So it's in line with the staff report.
So I guess where I'm headed with this is, is that if you look at the age of some of these roads, 1890, 19 whatever, I, my assumption is at some point that road had a reason, and I'm not really sure what that reason was, because unfortunately, I wasn't around in those days. I, I'm just thinking that instead of absolutely terminating it right there at a fence line, seems like it could make a short connection over to that, that, that little piece right there. Seems, and it's, it makes more sense than tying it into Road Two, to me.
Okay, so I also have a few other pages that I can distribute with some alternatives. One of the alternatives has that, where Road Three goes westbound to connect to Road One.
Okay, so you do have that?
Yes. And so if, if, if the commission would like that option, I can provide that.
Yeah, I'm just, like I said, I think it's one that I see in that we're just, if we just terminate that road, it, it's kind of like, I'm trying to figure out why that road was there in the first place.
Yeah.
And again, I wasn't around in those days, so I don't know, but I, my assumption is that something happened there at one time. And we've got enough, we've got enough old timers that run it down these roads that they might make complaints about that.
There were a lot of mining claims, so potentially somebody wanted to mine in that section.
Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson for the record. I could probably shed a little extra light on that, that conversation. So as Jennifer said, the road currently ends in the middle of the property, so whether it ends there or down at the property line wouldn't really seem to matter. If it got, went ahead and got rerouted, but instead of running east, it runs west, that would probably be an acceptable alternative. The condition of Approval Six F deals with that particular reroute, and it gives both options for either being terminated with a turnaround or connected to the west. And so if the Planning Commission decides one or the other, then they could turn that from two options to just one option, or if it doesn't matter, you could leave it either way.
So Dean, Jeff Goings for the rec, so Dean, just to clarify that, if that road is terminated and not tied back in, there would be a turnaround area there?
Correct.
Okay. That makes a difference, too.
Yeah, there's a very faint little blue dot over here, which is indicating a turnaround.
Is there any other discussion or questions?
I only have one question as it relates to Road Number Four. It looks like in the updated plan, the request, I guess it's Four and Five in parcel Number Nine, there's a portion of that road that is no longer intended for abandonment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Staff had highlighted some concerns with zigzagging, so we thought we'd bring it further into the property line to alleviate those concerns.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion, questions from the commission? Go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. Jennifer, your last name Shaheen, or?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I had a question on, on Road Eight. It was suggested earlier in the discussion that that would be rerouted to the south, to the southeast corner.
Yes, and staff had issues with the grade and some ravine. I also have another option available that gets rerouted along the west side of the parcel. But we, we thought that it, it would unencumber the public to only have to go up Sage Hen, take one turn, and then a second turn.
And I'm, I'm looking at, all of your reroutes are within the property that you own?
Correct.
Right, so you're not going into, to a right-of-way into BLM or anything like that? You don't need any other approval?
No, these are just at the corner crossing.
Right. No, I'm fine with it. I just had a question about, A, where it was going.
Understood. Thank you. Just one more comment. Is it possible to have staff's recommendation be supported by the updated layout?
Is this the updated?
If, if, if the commission wants Option C, or if they want the initial one in the presentation?
Oh, I see.
Whichever, could, we just, you know, are asking for some clarity on what is acceptable.
We will state, road by road.
Okay, great.
What we're recommending, so that, and then we will maybe enter this document into the record to be referenced, to make sure that there is no confusion.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have one question. Currently, I see, at least in my packet, I have one map labeled Updates with Staff Recommendations.
Mm-hmm.
And I have another one, Option C, Update with Staff's Recommendations, and I think that's the westward. The only difference I see is the westward traversal of Road Number Three along the piece. Is there an Option B that I'm missing?
Yes, there's Option B and D. I didn't want to confuse you, but would you like me to distribute all the options?
I was just going to, if I could speak to that. So one of them is the one that Mr. Hyde was referring to, going around the box, and, you know, we just thought it was confusing to do that with a bunch of turns for people. And then we have another option if you want to see it, but we thought this was the best option that addressed all the concerns of the.
I would really like to see all the options, if you don't mind. Yeah. I, I'd like to see any options that you have there, because.
Okay. I guess my one question then, based off what you said, which, which option is the one that you preferred?
So these are, our preferred option was the initial option that didn't have a number, or excuse me, a letter, but we're happy to do Option C to address Mr., well, she's blocking, the commissioner's concern about Road Three terminating instead of proceeding. So we're happy to do that if that's more favorable to the commission's view.
Is that an option, C and D as well?
So B is the route around E, which more, which is more.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not. It's not that desirable. I just have a question.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I just was. Right, we were trying to spare you the brain damage we went through in trying to come up with all the different options, but happy to share them with you.
Do you guys prefer Option C?
We prefer the option that has no letter, the initial one in the packet, but to address Mr. Goings, is that correct?
And it's, I actually see your point here now. I really truly do see the point. I just, I wanted the public to be able to see that. I'm sorry.
Jeff Goings for, Jeff Goings for the record. I just wanted the public to be able to see that, that that had been left, and, you know, there's other people out here that want to, want to know what happens to that portion right there. I, I think it makes sense, your, your revision without that little piece, but I just, you know, it just needs to be brought up so people can see it. Yeah, that's the point.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. You know, after all these iterations, I, I prefer the first one, without a letter. I mean, you guys have studied this. I, I don't see how it makes a whole lot of difference. So, that's my, my opinion is to go without the letter.
Is there any other discussion, questions?
Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson for the record. There was a conversation a minute ago about Roads Four and Five within parcel Nine, which is right there. I would suggest adding another item to Number Six because they have changed the proposed route to say that replacement road for Roads Four and Five around the, I guess that would be the west side of parcel Nine, maybe, may follow a different path to deal with site limitations, I guess. So, wanted to point that out. That was an item that kind of came up after our review, and that road hadn't intended to be following a different path, but now it appears like it's going to be, according to the applicant's diagrams.
Would you like to speak to that comment?
I didn't quite understand, so, okay.
I can address it. So if you look at the original application, it was simply a 90-degree turn around the perimeter of the parcel. There was concerns issued in the, in the report by staff that the topographical area, or the topography of the area could cause access to that road to be difficult because of grade or other issues. And so, our civil engineer went out and took a look at it and came up with the option that is in the one labeled Update with Staff's Recommendations, no letter, the first one. It's also actually on the, on all of them, it's the same, actually. So that new sort of dogleg route is meant to address the issue with the terrain, to be able to make sure that the road is, is not going to be excessively steep or have other issues for access.
Is there any further discussion or questions? None heard. Is there any public comment concerning this matter? None heard. I'd ask for just a moment to confirm we have the motion in order. I now ask for a motion for approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. And now, this is going to take us a while here, okay, because we're going to have to wander our way through each, every one of these roads. So just, that's just a heads up. Mr. Chairman, based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move to find the criteria found in CCC 1608.050 have been met, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the requests from NV Energy to abandon county road easements for the following roads, and certain provisions are followed as listed in the conditions of approval of staff report. Starting with Road One, that appears to be the same, right?
That is, yes.
Okay. As listed in Document Number 475559, located within, within APN Number 004351-09, as listed in Document 475559, located within APN 004351-15.
Please identify the road that, in front of that.
That's Road One. That's second Road One. Road Two.
We are doing Road Two.
We are not going to be doing Road Two, so that will be removed completely.
Correct.
Road Three will be not as listed in document, right? It'll be listed in this new, it's going to be listed as in this exhibit, because the original showed a connector up there, which there no longer.
That's incorrect.
Three is just all.
Number, Road Three is the same.
Okay. As listed in Document 475562, located with APN 004351-15.
Please identify the road that you just spoke of.
That was Road Three.
Okay.
Road Four, as listed in Document 475563, located within APN 004351-09.
And this one will be changed. You're just going to do a portion of Road Four as listed in that document.
What are we going to call this?
And as identified in the NV Energy Road Abandonment Application, page six.
Did you add that, or do I need to repeat that?
It's, it's in, if you want to accept what I've provided, that's fine.
Okay.
Do you accept the comments from legal counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Road Five, as listed in Document 475568, located with APN 004-351-09, with exception to the section as listed in the NV Energy staff report, or recommendations, staff and Road Six is listed in Document Number 475570, located with an APN 00435109. Road Six is listed in Document Number 475570, located with an APN 004-351-09. Road Seven...
This is also...
Does it change? Does it change Road Six?
Road Six has no change, Road Seven does.
Does, Road Seven has it. As listed in Document 475571, located with APN 004-351-09, with the exception of that portion as the NV Energy's updates with staff recommendations. And Road Eight, as listed in Document Number 475591, located with an APN 004-351-11. And does that make a, it is different. It's different as well.
The abandonment is the same.
Abandonment is the same. Okay. Very good. Okay.
And the last piece will be...
Road Four, we've got that.
Go ahead and read the, go ahead and read the next paragraph there.
Okay. Yeah. Based on the information provided in the application, the staff report, and I move to find that the criteria found in CCC 1608-050 have not been met and therefore we recommend the Board of County Commissioners deny the request to abandon county road easements for the following road, Road Number Four, as listed in Document Number 475563, located within APN 004-351.
Dash?
Dash one.
Dash one five, excuse me. That's a lot of stuff there.
Also, can you include the recommended conditions?
Yeah. Based on the code requirements issued during the review of the project, the following conditions of approval are recommended to be included with any of approval. And I've got, you want to read through those?
Nope. That's good. That's good.
I just ask that you amend Condition Six to allow for the reroute as identified in the NV Energy Road Abandonment Application for Roads Four and Five.
Just say yes.
Yes.
You agree?
Yes.
Okay. Do you hear everything that... Motion has been made by Commissioner Goings. May I have a second?
Sir?
Motion has been made by Commissioner Goings, seconded by Commissioner Hyde. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Is there a ten day period? Agenda Item Nine, New Business F, Special Use Permit Application for Rail-Based Services filed by Rex Massey for Fernley Business Park LLC. The property is located at 17127 Inland Port Drive, assessors parcel numbers 00925177 and 009251-78, consisting of 23.82 and 58.18 acres respectively in the industrial zoning district. Is there anyone here to speak? Please state your name and business address for the record.
Rex Massey, Industrial Realty Group. Address is 1190 Somi Drive, Suite 103 Reno.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson for the record. So you have before you a special use permit for a rail-based services and industrial park submitted by Rex Massey, as he indicated. So Rex is with the Industrial Realty Group, and if I understand this correctly, they own Fernley Business Park LLC. And I think it's a recent development of the Western Nevada Transload LLC is going to be operating the facility now. Is that right, Rex?
Correct. We're the owners of the site under a legal entity.
Okay.
Fernley Business Park LLC. Western Nevada Transload is the name of the operating business.
Thank you. So the property is at the county line on the way to Fernley, and if you're looking down at the railroad tracks, you'll see the big propane tanks. That's the property we're talking about. The Western Nevada Rail Park has a long history with the county. Of course, the name has changed now. They've undergone a lot of land divisions, one of which was reviewed last year by the Planning Commission, and it's a parcel map, so that the APNs that are currently listed on the application are going to change. There's also a history of special use permits that are referenced in the staff report. You'll see a historic rundown of the different things that have happened over time. This has been a project that's had a lot of complexities. It's been very difficult and lengthy to review. This comes from the applicant's desire to not have to come back for a new SUP with every little change, and we've talked about that quite a bit before he submitted the application. Staff was intrigued with this idea at first, and we did something like this for the Black Gold Terminal's multi-tenant lay-down yard that was previously approved by the Planning Commission a few years ago, but it was never implemented. One aspect of this approach is allowing development to occur over an extended time, longer than normal. This decision attempts to incorporate a reasonable duration of phasing so that the rail park can do things over time, and that's built into the conditions of approval. And staff is recommending allowing five years to get this first phase to be constructed. But the more difficult aspect of this approach is, that has caused the most problems, is allowing future development without knowing the use or the project details, especially ones needing, possibly needing, an SUP, which a lot of industrial development does in the county, has a history of difficult industrial projects. The site plan, oh, can you show the site plan, Diane? Oops. There we go. Thank you. So the site plan is divided into... Those buttons work fine, but the pointer won't. Alrighty. Oh, well. Divided into three areas. There's Area One, and Area Two, and an Area Three. Area One's at the south, Area Two's in the middle, and Area Three is in the north. Each area has descriptions of improvements that are then separated into two groups. There's an implemented soon group and a future development group. On, I guess this application does not really show the shading very well. I'm sorry, this image on the screen. In the applic, in the, in the, in your packets, there's a site plan that has better shading. But the future development seems to be shown in the shaded area. Except for the track, the only Area One has development that is listed as implemented soon. Yeah. Well, that's the Area One building area that, where it says the container holding would be, the area described as implemented soon. Throughout the project, mostly the same activities are proposed across all three areas. There's minor variations between the areas, and a few items in one area might be listed that are not found in the other areas, and these are described in the staff report in more detail. In the staff report, there's three general categories of proposed areas of development. As noted before, we have the rail track improvements, and each area, each of the three areas proposes rail track improvements. And these are specific and have details, and staff is comfortable approving all of the rail track improvements shown on the application. There's also a category of uses that are described as conceptual buildings, and the staff report goes into detail about how, without knowing the uses or project details, we can't really approve them with this SUP. Another category of uses is the non-building uses and activities. Unlike the conceptual buildings, the application proposes specific outdoor uses and activities. Furthermore, these areas are directly for the main business's transloading operation. This is more similar to the Black Gold Terminal's permit that I mentioned before, and while using that approach is still experimental, it's, since it's never been implemented, staff is willing to try it. Staff recommends approving the outside storage activities for Area One in this SUP with the details reviewed and future zoning review. Approving Areas Two and Three is more difficult because there's a complication that the eventual container terminal growth will trigger a staff report, which in itself requires a special use permit. No traffic study's been done for the existing operation, and one's not being done for the current SUP. So the traffic information that was provided in the application was only for Area One, and it doesn't appear to trigger a traffic study, but is unknown whether additional expansion of a container and other storage yards would do so. Consequently, staff recommends limiting this SUP to the Area One approval. The staff report also reviews the five criteria that are required for a special use permit. Criteria One is about compatibility, and this project does not have compatibility problems. The second criteria is about conformance with the master plan and compliance with the county code. There are several requirements that code compliance for previous SUPs didn't complete, and so these are addressed in the conditions of approval. Criteria Three is about overburdening public services. In these industrial situations, the main issue is fire and police response, and we're recommending that an emergency response plan be developed that's approved by both the Fire Marshal and the Sheriff. This is a standard requirement for all of the big industrial operations that happen in the county. Criteria Four is about mitigating road and traffic impacts. The Nevada Department of Transportation controls access to the Reno Highway, and they've provided comments indicating that they'll need a trip generation letter and review to confirm that the access can handle the additional truck traffic. Since they built it, I don't expect there to be any problems. They built a high T, if you recall, driving by that intersection, and which is a divided highway arrangement for turning movements. Criteria Five is about environmental impacts. The only thing I want to make sure of is that the dust is controlled on the past and future development areas. So staff is recommending approval. There are a number of conditions of approval. You'll notice that Condition Five deals with conformance of the county code, and so it includes a number of items to kind of bring the things that haven't been done yet from previous SUPs up to, up to snuff. So that, I'll be happy to answer questions, and I believe Rex has some presentation that he'd like to go over.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any, would you like to comment to those comments prior to your presentation?
Mr. Chair, I think in general, I'm in agreement with what was presented. And as I walk through my presentation, I'm going to kind of streamline this and reduce some of the requests and at least give you a little bit more of as to why I was pursuing more of a master plan look at the site versus just piecemealing, as has been the case in the last couple of SUPs.
Okay.
So with that, would you like me to...
Go ahead. You have the floor.
Great. Just note on the front cover, our new address. It's no longer Reno Highway. We did make that change. It is now Inland Port Drive. Page Two. Site development, what's existing, I think you guys know this site pretty well. I would say it's zoned industrial. It's been a rail use. It's been, it's had a history of rail use. It's known as the Darwin Siding. We bought it because there's a switch in place, and we had visions of expanding those rail services at that site. Under the industrial zoning district, the special use permit is required for anything that's what they call transportation-related services. That's what always brings us here. It's in the, it's in the table of uses. That's the requirement that brings us to the Planning Commission whenever we want to do something on the site because it requires a special use permit for transportation-related services in this zoning district. In addition to the existing facilities we have already, the Western Nevada Transload has added or intends to add more than 12,000 feet of onsite track. This has been a substantial investment on our part to date. Installing track is fairly expensive. The principal business segment is currently transloading bulk commodities for regional local customers. A critical business element going forward for us is going to be transloading shipping containers from truck to rail, from rail back onto truck and out, off of our site. And that's subject of tonight's SUP and even the subsequent variance request. As Mr. Patterson indicated, we have three near-term development initiatives which are subject of the SUP. There's a 350-foot rail extension at the very south end. You can see we're building some of the rail already, and a lot of the rail that was subject to the last SUP has now been installed, but we have, we have a subsequent piece of extending it even further, another 350 feet. So that is in the SUP. We also have as part of that southern area, what Mr. Patterson referred to as Area One, it's kind of towards the south end of the site, a shipping container depot and holding area. And then also, within that shipping container depot, it's a shipping container staging and handling area. So we buy pretty expensive sophisticated equipment to be able to pick containers off of stacks and move them onto trucks or back onto rail. So there'll be an area down there where that kind of equipment is moving, and then up a little bit, and I'll explain this diagram a little bit further to the north, there'll be the, there'll be the container stacks themselves. In this application, I originally sought for future, I sought an SUP for future development utilizing a master plan concept. We finally got to a point where we think we understand what kinds of things we're going to do on the site. I want to disclose that to the Planning Commission so you guys have an idea of where we're going with this site. And it's going to, it's not in stone, but it's likely to consist of a combination of buildings, more track, container storage. We've even talked about a milling of feed onsite, primarily for local users that could come in, fill the trucks with feed that's already been milled on our site, and then, and then head back out. So what I want to do is give the Planning Commission just an idea of overall what we're trying to do there, and then to receive some additional guidances to the development. It makes it really hard in terms of designing a site. When you get down to the specifics, you got to spend a lot of money in engineering, and what you don't want to do is go and spend a lot of money in engineering and have, come back to the approving agent's government entity and say, no, we don't like that. Or there was something, there was some other constraint or regulation that was applied that then changes the whole thing. But when I can move forward in that design process and have some input, have some guidance, I feel a lot more comfortable about spending the money and where we can go within the parameters that are allowed by Churchill County. So that was the original reason for having this long submission and a site plan that covered the entire area. So I'm going to go with Mr. Patterson's recommendation. I'm going to take off area, the northern areas, Areas Two and Three off the table, if you bring up the site plan. As mentioned, Areas Two and Three, there are going to be future development. We're working really hard to get a user for that building in the middle at 227 Inland We're working really hard to get a user for that building in the middle at 2. We're getting pretty close to that, but I understand that there were some current concerns about not having sufficient amount of detail. I can take that off the table. I can come back at a later date, and we can just focus on Area 1. So I'm in agreement, and we can now, you know, we can now concentrate and look at Area 1, which is the southern end of the site. Is there any, oh, I will also mention, there's kind of a hashed in that site plan, there's kind of a hashed area around Number 4. All that's been either developed or subject to the existing SUPs that's been brought before the board. Is there any questions, even on future things that I can answer or clarify for the board as to, I mean, the Planning Commission's to where we might be going?
Mr. Chair, Mark Hyde for the record. Rex, I didn't understand what you said about Area 4 that's...
All of that in Area 4 has come before the Planning Commission under, we've had three previous SUPs.
Oh, okay.
Or it's existing facilities that have already been approved, built and developed.
Okay.
Hey Rex, I just wanted to clarify, the last SUP was for one branch of the three there?
And the southern track.
And the southern track. So there's three branches, and so what we're suggesting is that the rest of those be authorized with this application.
Okay. Next slide, please.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde again for the record. Couple of questions for you, Rex. Can you give us an idea of approximately what it does cost to lay down a track, 350 feet of track?
Oh, all installed, it's probably 550 linear foot. So we put in 12,000 feet. So it's a pretty good investment.
Yeah, I just wanted to have an idea of the kind of investment. And what I'm understanding you to say is let's take Areas 3 and 4, well, 2, 3, and 4 off the table for tonight.
Yep.
Right? Because that's what was giving us the biggest heartburn, so.
Sure. And if it was difficult to understand, that's probably part of my fault. We can come back and address it at a later date if that's, if you're inclined to go that route. I think it would help us, and I think it would help you guys and minimize our time up here in front of you.
Thank you.
So in looking at Area 1, I'll point out a couple, if you go to the next slide, I'm sorry, there you go. Next step, there you go. So some of the features common to this development area, I would note, we will have a perimeter security fence. It'll likely be at least, it'll probably be up to 10 feet high, and then we'll be bobbler on top of it. Some of our users are going to require this kind of fence be put in for security purposes so that people cannot get on the site. Oftentimes, there's going to be expensive items that are going to be in those containers that are awaiting shipping either in or out. So security's important to us. We are even willing to look at fence, slating the fence so it creates a visual barrier onto our site as part of the fencing. I think that would be appropriate to help reduce and minimize the visual impact that a container area handling and equipment like that can present along the highway. So we're willing to look at that and probably install slats in the fence. The landscape buffer, we are already considering at least a 25 to 30-foot wide buffer, 5 to 6 feet high. There's even been discussion of going higher, primarily the purpose of addressing the aesthetic issues and visual impacts onto the site. So between the fence and the landscape buffer, I think we can do a pretty good job at obscuring the view into the site. Also note that when we grade that site, it's likely going to drop 3 feet, so then the containers and all the equipment, everything's going to set down even lower. So we'll have berm, fence, and very possibly landscape trees, so I think we'll work very nicely into sheltering view from the roadway. The other part of, just want to point out, we really don't have any plans in handling any kind of hazardous materials, other than what comes in from DOT regulated shipments that are placard. We're not in any kind of business to handle any kind, right now proposing we're going to handle any kind of hazardous materials. If we do move in that direction, we'll certainly come back in front of the Planning Commission and make a presentation, seek a use permit for that kind of use. So nothing hazardous. Hours of operations, down the road, we may potentially expand to 24/7. We think most of our operations are going to be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. There is site lighting that we would have, and those have been subject to previous SUP approvals. We will have site lighting in that area for security and safety purposes. So I've gone over most of this, what's at the south end. What I wanted to talk really briefly about now is what we're looking at, and we really feel strongly that our container stacking, for us, needs to be, needs to be a minimum of 3 high. And there's a fair amount of logistics and operational elements that come into play. A container stack is driven by a multitude of influences. It has to do with where those containers are being shipped to, which ports, which areas of the country, who's scheduled to come in and go out. So that stack is, how it's designed and how it's laid out is critical. Going higher improves our efficiency because we have these very expensive pieces of equipment that then have to move the containers, and the more you move them, the more costlier it is. That cost translates, goes down to our customers and is borne by the customers. So efficiency in operation, moving very expensive equipment, moving very heavy containers around a site, there's a lot of efficiency by stacking and not just spreading containers out all over the place. Another really important element of that is safety of operation. The more those, that piece of equipment is on the ground, moving around the site, and the further distance it has to go, you inject greater opportunity for accidents and problems to happen onsite. And these are very heavy pieces of equipment, very heavy containers that are being moved, and so you really want for even safety purposes to minimize that kind of movement on the site. So regardless of whether we had 200 acres or 500 acres, if we had an area that we're going to develop, there would be a stack someplace on that 500 acres. It's not that we can just spread it out and limit the height. It just doesn't work that way from our shipping operation. The other part that I would mention really quickly is what we may propose, and I believe it was in the application. There's always an opportunity for some kind of lay-down yard, and dimensional materials come in, plastics, minerals, aggregate, all that kind of stuff could come in, and they would be set down on our site awaiting shipment either in and out, in or out. So it may not be 100% containers. It could be other materials and commodities that come in. I would note that we requested 4-high internally because, largely because it's obscured from view, and 4-high works better for us operationally. When I talked to our operational folks, I really felt like there was, it's going to be difficult to convince people that we ought to be able to go 4-high right next to the highway. So we made that concession on our own that ideally, we would rather have 4-high here. We'll go to 3-high in this Area 1. Internally, where it's really obscured from view by the surrounding hills, we would like to go to 4-high in there. It just works better for us in that area. And you really can't see those Area 2 and 3 from the road at all. It's very difficult to see down in there. So people driving by the site on US 50 would not see that any container stacks in there. I will end my presentation there. I've got several more pages, and open it up for any additional questions.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. If I understand the barrier you're creating, you have a 10-foot fence with slats, then you have a 3-foot berm, right?
Could be 3 to 10 feet.
3 to 10 feet, and plus after you grade below, it's going to be 3 feet lower.
Yep.
So we're actually creating a visual barrier of how high?
With the drop of 3 feet, and if you went up 5 to 10, plus if you went with a fence on top or trees, you're going to be right there at probably around 20 feet. And so when you're in a road and you're looking at, you're looking off the distance, you're looking at an angle. So pretty soon, 30 feet disappears. It doesn't take long before 30 feet of container disappears behind a 18-foot-high kind of barrier.
And you could put a ship out there with some water around it, like a port. Anyway, this isn't that close to us in terms of the corridor that we've been really concerned about, but I like the idea of how high you're going to mitigate this problem, so thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Glingster, am I hearing you right? You're talking about trees as well, trees? Because I was just trying to think, I'm trying to see how trees are going to grow in that out there. There's not much growing out there right now. I don't think, I kind of think that if, I would rather see, I'd rather see more of the berm fence height than try to plant dead trees that are going to die out there. I mean, seriously, that is some, that's some pretty rugged area out there that I don't think is supportive of trying to plant cottonwood trees or even Russian olives for that matter. But that's just my opinion. I'm just, I wanted to see if I am headed down, if I was hearing you correctly.
The soil's a challenge, and the water's equally challenging.
I believe if, as the Commission, we can determine, like, give him some parameters of how the berm can be, and then how high the fence can be, and then if he's already agreeing that he's going to make it 3 foot lower, then he can work out the landscaping detail with the department, and they can talk about trees.
Yes, so that was going to be my point there was, is I, I think if you're going to spend a little extra money here instead of trying to plant trees, I'd rather see that berm go just a little higher, which would help the screening and out there, because they just don't see those trees growing out there.
Sure.
So if the Commission is, you know, if we're thinking that too high is acceptable, then as, you know, as long as he, his landscaping makes it less than too high, then it would work. And then if he's 3-high, then he's 3-high. It doesn't matter because it appears to the passerbyer that it's 1 and 1/2 high or something.
Yeah.
You know?
And I would say in that south area, the important thing to remember is about halfway down at the very, very southern end, we're not going to get to 3 containers high. It's just, it'll be left for trucks and containers on chassis and equipment, and so there's going to be a limited area where you're actually going to reach those heights.
I would also say that probably the visual impact is probably going to be in westbound travel lane. Your eastbound travel lane, you're probably never going to see that. It'll be behind you before you really recognize it. But where you will see that is in the westbound, is your westbound into Fernley from Fallon here, and that would be the one area that, you know, I think you could add a few extra...
Are you talking about the eastbound? The eastbound's difficult to see because we have topo features that block when you're coming from Fernley, you have topo features.
I guess what I'm saying is, is the only time that lot, that Number 1 is going to be really seen by any travelers down the road is really if you're westbound.
Going into Fernley.
Going into Fernley. That's, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson for the record. So I just wanted to remind folks that we have another application with Rex for the variance for the containers. And so, you know, we'll be talking in depth about stacking height and numbers at that point. So they have a bearing here, but that actual decision will be with the next application on the agenda.
Yes, we agree. But on this application, should we get the details of the berm and the height of the berm, height of the fence, so it coincides with what we may or may not approve in the next item?
I think you can do it like that if you'd like to. Joe?
You can do it as part of either portion. I think if your intention is to limit it just because of the container height, you'd probably wait until the next item where we're going to be talking about container height, because if you were to limit it to 2 containers, it might not make any sense. So if it's for a different purpose, go ahead.
Is there any other discussion from the Commission? None heard. Is there any public comment? None heard. Do you have any further, does the applicant have any further information? Thank you. I call for a motion to approve or to deny.
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report heard tonight, I move to find that Churchill, the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.080H have been met and therefore approve the limited improvements listed in the conditions of approval, and also have not been, and therefore deny all remaining improvements not listed in the conditions of approval. For the proposed special use permit for rail-based services and industrial park expansion for Western Nevada Transload owned by Fernley Business Park on APN 009-251-78 and 77, this approval is subject to limitations and conditions as listed in the staff report.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Goings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. There's a 10-day of fill period, and the planning department will contact you at that Agenda item 9G, an application for a variance from limitations on shipping container storage in Churchill County Code 16.02.0.3.1 filed by Rex Massey for Fernley Business Park LLC. The property is located at 17127 Inland Port Drive. Assessor's parcel number 009-251-77 and 009-251-78, consisting of 23.82 and 58.1 acres respectively in the industrial zoning district. The applicant proposes to waive the limits on the number of shipping containers on the property and request to be allowed to stack them 3 units high. Please state your name and address, business address for the record.
Rex Massey, and located at 1190 Selmy Drive, Suite 103 Reno.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dean Patterson for the record. As you mentioned, this is an application for variance from the shipping container limits for Western Nevada Transload. So this application is very similar to the container variance that the Planning Commission heard last month. The variance requests exceptions from 2 provisions of the container code standards. The first one is the limit on 1 shipping container per acre on a parcel. This is an 82-acre parcel, and so they would normally be allowed 82 containers. They're asking to exceed that. The other provision is cargo containers may not be stacked, and as we've been discussing with the last agenda item, the SUP, they are asking to stack containers 3-high. Well, actually, 3-high in Area 1 and 4-high in Areas 2 and 3. Staff generally supports the idea of the variance for these container handling facilities. This is based on, excuse me, this is based on the previous container variance, and it seems like the Planning Commission supports that idea from the previous review. The staff report lists multiple considerations for the Planning Commission to make their decision. We have the first one, which is whether the variance is appropriate in any way, and I think based on the previous review from last month and our conversations tonight, that sounds like the Planning Commission supports that idea. The other considerations are, if the variance is warranted, then is it acceptable to waive the number and limit entirely? Is it acceptable to stack the containers, and is visual mitigation needed? I understand some of the Planning Commissioners have specific thoughts on these considerations, and the variance criteria reviews them in the staff report. So with that, I'll just get out of the way and let folks talk the matter over, and I suspect what the planning, sorry, what the staff report is recommending for the motion is likely to change, so please, you know, pay attention to how you... the motion is likely to change, so please, you know, pay attention to how you'd like to change the motion that's listed in the staff report, as well as any conditions of approval. With that, I'll let Mr. Massey talk.
Thank you. Do you have comments to hit, or you can start your presentation?
Well, just a few comments. As I had mentioned in our previous conversation, three high in the south area, four high containers in the internal area. I don't think the internal area can really be seen from the roadway. It's pretty concealed by the topography. And it's even a further distance. The container areas that we'd be looking at begin to diverge with the highway, and so the distance gets even further apart. So I really don't see where stacking four would have any visual impact from the highway. Just, it just doesn't, I drive by there all the time, and it just, to me, it just wouldn't exist. The three is really a minimum that we can operate under efficiently and I believe safely at the southern end, and not all of that is going to just be, some of these container areas are broken up by wide drive aisles, and so there's going to be a lot of breakup. It's not going to be just one big solid wall of containers. Particularly at the south end, where that's going to be broken up with operational, operations and other vehicles and things being parked down there, there just isn't going to be probably a very low chance of three high containers down towards that south end at all. It will, it will most likely happen during loading operations, which is short-term. They occur during the day, and there might be where a container, where you see three stacked containers, but then it comes down an hour later or the next day. So it's not a, it's not really a short-term, it's not there very long. So it provides even less of an opportunity to create that visual impact. I generally agree with staff. I've had some difficulty with the variance itself, primarily because the requirement and the limitation on density and stacking relates to containers being used for storage. We're not using containers for storage, we use containers for shipping. It's a big difference, and I think this provision in the code applies to another situation that is not on our site. I think we're completely different from that. But that being said, I'm more than happy to work out whatever we need to do, work out, and to seek planning commission support. And I would also note, as we've previously talked in the SUP, I think what we have planned for the site in terms of berms and slatted fence, et cetera, is probably going to exceed even what staff has recommended in their staff report tonight. And I think we're going to come up with a, with a site that works really well for us and takes care of some of that visual impact.
Thank you. The commission have questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair Scott Nelson for the record. Rex, you say there's no storage, but we talked earlier about there being heavy and expensive equipment in those containers, so there is some storage, but I mean, are you talking, I mean, how short-term are we talking about? At least that's what, at least that's what I understand.
Oh, and when the container's going in and out. So there's all kinds of stuff in the containers. It could be TVs in the containers.
Right, so there is some storage going on there.
This is the way I look at the storage element of it. When I, when I go to Office Depot and I buy a storage box for my old tax files and I stick them up in the attic, that's a storage box. When I call up Amazon and I say, hey.
So I'm asking, how long are we talking on some of that stuff?
In the operations area, it could be a day.
Okay.
The, you will not notice the stack, because it's, they're always picking off containers off the stack, pick them off.
What do you think the maximum amount is?
All the containers staying there onsite?
Yeah. A week?
Yeah.
Okay.
It really depends on schedules, who's shipping, where it's shipping to.
And how many containers do you think you're going to have onsite, or do you think you need?
It depends on customer demand.
Okay, well, I hesitate to give you carte blanche unlimited containers, so that's kind of why I'm asking for a, for a number there. We've never done that before. We have other businesses in town to just say, yeah, you can put 10,000 containers there. I'm not comfortable with that, so that's why I'm asking.
The container stack, if you go three high, so there's a constraint right there. The dimension, the width of the parcel that we're going to use, that's going to, that's going to create another constraint. These are 24 feet long, so you stack them end on end on end.
I understand that. Do you have any 500, 400, 300, anything close?
I would have to go and make some measurements and give you a, and I could give you a number. I don't think it's, it's not over 1,000, it's probably in the hundreds.
Because based on what we've done before, we've allowed like four per acre, which would be about 320, give or take, containers on, on that site. So that's kind of the direction I'm thinking, and that's why I'm asking what you're thinking for numbers.
We can, so a typical stack might be six deep, end on end, three high, six to eight wide, and then we'd have a drive aisle. So it really depends on the site layout. I don't mean to avoid your question, but it really depends on the layout and those constraints that shape the container stack.
Okay. Mr. Chairman Jeff Glingster, Dean, staff over there, I have a question. So in our, in our Churchill County Code, just enlighten me, we have no distinction between industrial, commercial, residential, anything on the amount of containers. It is, it is across the board, one container per acre. Is that correct?
More or less for the resident, sorry, for the, for the non-business zones, so not C1, C2, and industrial. It's just maximum of two.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're all in agreement that that needs to be addressed, probably in this, in this next thing that is codes that were, or, excuse me, whatever we're getting, we're going to do work on. My next question is, the last one that we did, which was last meeting, was that, was that industrial or was that C1?
It was C2.
It was C1, wasn't it?
C2.
C2? Okay, so there's, okay. So my point is, I guess we're going to have, we're going to have another distinction here between C2 and industrial, and industrial seems to me to be compatible with containers. That's what we're talking about, industrial. And again, I think what we're talking about, storage, he's talking about storing equipment, what have you, in there. This is, what's stored in those containers is going to be transported on rail, on truck, to and from, back and forth. You're going to see a lot of turnover there. I just see that we've got to, somewhere along the way, we've got to make some clarifications on some of these things, so.
Right, and in the last meeting, and also in this staff report, I did point out that I've had inquiries about container-type businesses, including from Rex, of course, but last time it was container modifications and sales. Other potential businesses might be container manufacturing, where they're pumping them out in large quantities. I've had inquiries from the Port of Oakland to store overflow containers out in the desert. It might be 1,000 or multiple thousands for all I know, but that one never went forward, so you folks never heard about it. But there's a number of businesses, not a lot, but there are some categories of businesses that just handle a lot of containers, and transloading is one of them.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say it's actually on the agenda this time for, I guess our next item will be possible topics for a planning commission workshop. One of the intended topics at that meeting is to discuss code revisions for the storage container limits. My recommendation is always that when you're considering this variance, remember that if you grant a variance today and then end up deciding to amend the code to allow greater use, it would become applicable to this project automatically when the code becomes effective. On the other hand, if you grant a variance that's greater than what you end up allowing in the code changes, that will be something that becomes grandfathered in, and it'll be allowed for, say, one user when it wouldn't be allowed for others. And of course, I just recommend that we consider this broadly for how we're going to deal with the many potential applicants that we will receive.
Thank you. Does the commission have any other discussion? Just one. Mr. Chair Mark Hyde for the record. Just clarification, Rex, I thought we were going to talk about these other areas, two, three, and four. But what we're talking about is, when it comes to variance on the containers, now that once we are talking about those other areas, is it just for that purpose only, is that we're talking about? I thought we were going to leave those areas alone completely until another day.
I'll blame it on, that was in the staff report, so I was just going along with the staff report. You want to take two and three, four area off?
Yeah, I just think that tonight we're talking about area one.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And that's your prerogative.
Yeah, and we're talking about stacking three high. What I'm trying to wrap my head around is you have a certain footprint that confines how many you're going to put in there.
Correct.
And I'm, my mind eventually was going with Commissioner Nelson about, you know, we have to limit this to a number. But then I'm wondering if we say, Scott, if we're saying, hey, you can go three high, and you're going to be confined by whatever that area is. I mean, I mean, do we pick a number?
I would say, at this point, picking a number is going to put definite ends to things, and I think the topography of the layout of the lots is going to depend, because again, they're not stacking these things end to end, side by side. They need to have transportation, and they've got to be able to move them, they've got to be able to pick them up, they've got to be able to transport them here and there. So I think that the stack height is the route we go on this.
Like a thousand.
Well, that's, there's a potential, if they have the ability within the lot.
I think we should probably stay with what we've approved in the past at this point until we have a workshop. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Massey, do you know the size of the area one? How much land is there? Have you investigated how many containers?
Area one, there's, there's a total of 22 acres in there. We've got a big hump in there, it's going to take a lot of grading to bring it down.
Can you bring the map back up of the areas?
I think it's reasonable to where, to look at a total of about 10 acres, which would, would be the three-stack container area, and then as you move south further, that's going to be more of an operations, there's going to be containers on chassis, ones, maybe two high down in there. So, and I think when you talk about stack height, that sets a constraint. The dimensions of the parcel are going to set a constraint, and whatever you come out with, engineering-wise, with drive aisles, that's going to end up being your container number. And that, that's how we design these sites, we design buildings, we start with the constraints, and then we work backwards into what we can actually achieve.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I was just looking at the application materials, and so the area one, shipping, container, holding area, which is the kind of triangular space on that map, aggregate base as much as 15 acres, the initial holding area will be 10 acres, will house new or used motor vehicles, trailers, trucks, so that'll take up some of the space. I was hoping there were some other area sizes, but I guess that we aren't that lucky. Rex, did you have some additional information about the container area itself?
In that, in that lower area down there, I think what's reasonable that could handle is probably 10 acres of stacked container area.
Will you be completing a site plan of that area to figure out your container stacking and your process?
We will. Yeah. It's a pretty complic, believe it or not, it's a pretty complicated process to come up with the layout of the container yard and how that all works together logistically.
So can we approve the containers and, and let the limit be based upon his site plan that gets approved by the department, once the department looks at it? And is that possible, or is that not an option, Mr.?
I mean, that's legally, yes, you can. I would tend to suggest that if it doesn't exist yet, it's going to be difficult for public to come in and provide comments about what that's going to look like, and so I'd be hesitant to go with, with that plan exactly.
Is it detrimental to your operation to provide a site plan prior to approval or anything like that?
When we get, typically when we get down to the site plan details, those are with building department and staff.
All right.
It's typically where it goes, and we work with the constraints that were given. Stack height would be one of the primary constraints. It would really limit the number of containers on there.
Okay.
And I think if we go and we really do a lot of these, some more of these enhanced measures with the berm and the fencing, it may take care of, if visual, if visual is the primary concern, I think we can take care of a lot of that, really put a dent into it. And I just would, would really emphasize that, I think what makes us different from other container uses is, you know, the provision in the code, to me, is really directed at non-rail users and non-shipping users and sites, and those areas really aren't designed, they're not zoned, and they're not recognized as part of the area's rail infrastructure. I think it's a completely different beast. When you talk about using containers for storage, building, using parts of them for house, that begins to come off the rail system and not part of the rail system, it's not part of an industrial use. So I think those are two different animals, where we are, our intended use of the, we're using the containers for what their intended use was, is to ship goods, and I think that makes, makes a big difference.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Jeff Glingster for the record. Okay, so, and I also want to come back to the tree, because again, I think, in my opinion, I don't think you're going to get trees to grow there, guys, and I would rather see monies put forth to build that berm to create a higher screen than just to try to plant trees that, due to lack of water, due to soil conditions, are not going to grow and not create any screening whatsoever. Then we're going to have a bunch of dead trees, is what I see. And back to Commissioner Nelson's concerns, is the number based on an acre or the 10 acres that we have there. But again, I think that the containers are for eyesight for, and if you limit the stack and create the buffer or the screening, then use your, use your lot how you can use it. Use it to your best beneficial use. And that's the way I see this, is it, it's for me, this is the way I see it, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record. I agree with Commissioner Goings, I feel like we ought to just approve the three high. But what we ought to talk about right now is how we're going to properly screen that, how high that berm will be. You've already said you'll build a 10-foot fence with slats, right?
Well, I've asked that of the planning commission, can we build a 10-foot fence?
But you're putting.
That's part of our request.
But you're putting that fence on a, on a berm, right?
We certainly can.
Yeah.
And it's done that way at, we have other facilities.
And so the idea is, how high do we need to go so that from the road, that's what we're concerned about. We're concerned about the visual. So how high do we need to be to completely screen that off from the public seeing containers stacked three feet high?
I think if you initially set, considering the drop in elevation of the site, and you can make that combined with the berm and the fence around 20 feet, when you have the additional setback, those containers are going to be far enough off that you're not, you're going to see maybe the tops of them of the third stack, but you're certainly going to eliminate the first two, and you're not even going to see those.
Well, that's a lot better than the eight-foot fence we had last month.
Yeah.
So, I like that. So maybe we could put into the motion that the visual screening would be a minimum of 20-foot tall from the lay of the land or something like that?
And I would ask, no doubt the southern end, we may not, I would ask that we have that flexibility to design, actually what we're going to use, the southern end, we're probably not going to reach that 20-foot height, so it, it might not be needed. And so I would ask that we could at least design to the heights that we're likely going to have in those areas. But when we get to that three-container stack high, then we'll make sure that we're getting the maximum.
That's probably workable at some point there.
That's probably workable, some point there. And then now we're back to, uh, maybe the, like Commissioner Goings said, put up the screening, and then whatever's feasible that goes on the property is, doesn't know really concern of errors. Okay, is there any other discussion? Uh, may I ask for any public comment? None heard, I ask for a motion for approval or denial.
Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson for the record, so just, you know, be sure you have your, uh, conditions spelled out, because they're not going to be what you've been talking about in the staff report.
Okay. You can do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. Okay, so based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move that the findings for conformance with the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.090 have been met, and therefore approve the request for a variance from container number and stacking limits for Western Nevada transload on APNs, or on APN, we're gonna limit this to, to area one. So it's gonna be limited to area one. And we're, with this condition that there be the maximum is three feet high with 20-foot screening. Three container height.
With 20-foot screening?
20-foot screening.
As to meet the three container height?
Yeah, to cover, to, to mitigate the, the view of that from the highway.
Where the three containers start?
Right.
Are you okay? I mean, does that include everything that needs to be included?
I'm just kinda thinking on the fly here, so I, I, I'm thinking that'll probably do the trick. I mean, right now, we're talking about area one, which, uh, includes the conceptual building area. So if you want the screening to be there, oh. Okay, so so normally screening needs to be done from multiple sides, so please consider whether you think it needs to be, um, extended to other sides to account for viewing it from different angles. I think Mr. Goings was describing the high visibility from, uh, coming from hazen toward Fernley, and, and looking into the site from that angle. And Mr. Massey was also pointing out that there's berms that are along the way, sorry, they're, they're along the highway, and in the area of the conceptual building in area two, and the conceptual building in area one, there's, there's berms there, but if those buildings are built, then those berms will get removed. Um, but then the buildings will kind of serve the function of screening, so, you know, these are the kinds of things that I try to think about when I'm.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record, we're only talking about area one. Right now, that's all we're talking-
Right, do you, do you want the screening to extend to the west edge of area one? Or just the container holding area?
What I'm saying is, we're using this, whatever screening is appropriate to, to mitigate the visual appearance of those. I mean, if you don't need 20 feet at one end, though-
Let me describe it a little differently. If you're looking at a business that has screening, if they just fence this, the, the, only the front facing the street, you're gonna be approaching this from a distance, from far away from the site, and as you look at it, you're gonna be looking at the, just the, the knife edge of their screening, and then everything else in the lot will be visible, so if you want to screen it, then you need to screen not just the front facing the street, but also the, the side that you see for almost the entire time you're driving toward, toward the, uh, the site.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
At the very south end, we would screen all the way across the parcel to the rail right of way. At the north end, where the buil- where that building sits on site one, there's a big hump right there. We would work out the landscape berm to combine with the, with that big mound there, to create that screening element. So we're, we're willing to come up not just along the highway, but then wrap to each side, so you create that barrier as well.
Thank you.
So the applicant has confirmed that the screening will go as necessary to close off any visual effects to, as passing?
Then, Mr. Chair, the only other thing that we might wanna add to that is to, to delete the, the need for the trees in the landscaping portion, because that is in the staff report here, so, in the recommendations, so.
Do we delete that, or just let the-
I agree, I, I agree to that condition, so this is-
Give it a second. Second.
You want the trees, right?
No, we don't have to.
I'm, I was just-
No, I agree with him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just, just to be clear, that there is some landscaping that is required. It doesn't have to be trees.
The landscaping can be worked out with your office.
Yeah.
So a motion is on the floor, as written, to, to recognize area one and not a parcel number, and the area one comes from a map provided by the applicant with addition, additional conditions of three container stacking and a 20-foot perimeter fencing to, and it goes where the containers start and stop, and the applicant has agreed to tie in the screening to physical barriers to complete the screening. Uh, it has been, motion's been made by Commissioner Hyde and seconded by Commissioner Goings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? You oppose?
Yeah.
Motion carries three to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, or excuse me, agenda item 10, discussion item, possible topics for Planning Commission workshop. Mr. Patterson?
Uh, this is gonna be me.
Oh, Mr. Legal Company.
I have a name, thank you. I'm just a lawyer.
Mr. Sanford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there is a planned workshop for, uh, the very end of this month. I have four topics I would like to, I think, bring to the, uh, commission's attention at that time. Those topics are, number one, changing the review of temporary use permits to an administrative function within the Planning and Public Works Department with either potential appeal rights to the Planning Commission. Uh, I'd also like you to consider the length of time you would like to allow for uh, specifically the home construction permits as either an administrative use or just a, a total amount of renewals allowed altogether. Uh, the second topic is storage container limits, as we've just discussed. Particularly the amount of limits that we will be providing by zone, whether we wanna allow containers in any of the residential zones for residential use, the limits on stacking, and whether we wanna do any special limitations for particular types of businesses that would potentially be excluded, such as container manufacturing, container shipping, et cetera. Number three is landscape requirements that are currently required, uh, throughout the code. Currently, I think we've received word that the new construction requirements have not been terribly burdensome, but when there's either an expansion or a change of use, that these have been problematic. Uh, and so any particular requirements that you would have would be great. Otherwise, um, whether you'd be open to something like the director having, uh, some approval of a landscape plan instead of that coming before, uh, the board. Uh, number four, last item, is outside storage screening. This has been something that's come up, uh, multiple times, and I think the considerations here would be either whether we want to change the, the zoning limitations, or whether we wanna limit it to a particular corridor. And so the intention at this time is I will be working with staff to provide some proposed language that will be for your consideration at that time. I don't expect to make recommendations at this workshop as to the exact language, just to receive your input and thoughts, and then we prepare uh, final language for a regular meeting.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have anything to add?
April 30th.
I, I think you were suggesting the 30th, um, the other day.
April 30th is the best for myself.
Okay. And then on the storage containers, are we gonna be talking about the limits of property use and all that stuff, right, and all encompassed in that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further from staff? None heard, we'll move on to item, agenda item 11, consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve or deny that is written?
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record, I move to approve the consent agenda submitted.
Second.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Nelson, seconded by Commissioner Goings. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Agenda item number 12, public comment. Is there any public comment? None heard? Item 13, adjournment. Meeting is adjourned 9:22 PM.